Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for allowing us to all come together. Please guide us through this meeting as to do what is best for the city. Thank you for all that you've done with us. Please be with us and our first responders, our residents more. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call of order, the city council meeting, March 28, 2024. Andy, no way this is planned?
The flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vicki?
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short? Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Jim Adams?
Here.
Melissa Choate? Ally Sugg? Jim Lay?
Here.
Andy Eklund?
Here.
Attorney Prince?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Members of the press?
Other record show we have a call room. First, a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes plus excerpts as presented of the February 15, 2024 council meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choate? Jim Adams?
I'm staying.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
How many was that?
Five.
Approval of pavement journals dated February 1, 2024 to February 29, 2024.
So moved.
Who was that? Jim?
Jim?
Jim Adams.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion carried.
You're due, Ally.
Next, approval of straight fund, financial statement, sanitation fund, general fund, community center O M, and Miss Laney's fund stated February 29, 2024.
So moved.
Who was that?
Me. You guys speak up.
Can I take a second?
I make that motion?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Yeah.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, you have your supervisors' reports. Do you have any questions for our supervisors?
How did our baseball thing compare with last year? You gave the data. How does that compare to last year?
It's just a little bit less, just because we are, you know, trying something new. We had, I think, two teams. I think there were only two teams total that left the league. But they, they didn't take their team. They tried to pick other players, so they kind of dropped out and became a travel team, as that is. But so overall, pretty good. And I think, even I think some of the families that are on those teams didn't realize, like, if they would have stayed in Heber, that they wouldn't have to stay in the Big 12 and travel. So I think some of them are kind of like, whoa, like, if I would have known that, it would have made a difference in our decision. So I think next year they'll be back. And I actually think Concord's joined us. A team from Pangarun has joined us. Well, we don't have to go there. They're going to come here. And it wouldn't surprise me if we have more in equipment and growth. Well, I'm not sure about growth, but equipment. And Gurus Ferry eventually will join us next year, too. So I think it's one of those things that will grow, that, once again, it'll be, maybe bad way to say it, but Heber Springs first, in a way. You know, like, people will come here versus us having to drive to places in the Big 12. I'd love to get that going in softball as well, but we just don't have enough participation yet. Overall, 20 players, 30 players at most.
I was curious, because you gave the numbers.
Yeah, about 30, yeah, about 30, something like that. Not, yeah, not a whole lot.
Sure.
But that part of that's also because we added in the four and fives? Because we added in that younger group?
They've been playing.
Yeah, they, they played last year.
Yeah, that's what was last year's first year.
No.
No.
They've been playing since hockey.
Yeah. I said the way he's four.
Spencer Dooson, the way he's like, we.
He did when he was four.
Yeah, we've always had T-ball. I think the difference is, is that y'all are doing girls now with T-ball. Like, it used to just be boyish in T-ball, but now it's.
So many families, parents of the mother, the parents of the girls are like, we don't want to travel. We don't want to drive. And so, like, can we do that? So we did, so we do have a mixture there of girls, you know, on those teams in their earlier ages. But once they turn eight, they all start playing softball. And like I said, we still have a lot of feedback saying that they want to stay in Heber, but we just don't have enough teams for them. So I think once, this will work, in my opinion. And like, once this does work this year, I think other teams that travel in the Big 12, like I said, Concord's going to realize they can drive, drive right down the road to Heber. I think the same thing with some Paimo teams, like, which I already have. And I think Gurus Ferry do the same as well. So I think we'll be able to build it.
All right. Any more questions? Also, a quick little bond update. Everybody has this information in a packet. We finally got the paperwork all squared away for the Arkansas Energy Office for that loan. And now we know how to pay them and what all those steps are going to look like. So now we're just waiting on equipment, and it's going to take a little bit for that. There's some long lead times on some of that equipment. But we're ready to get started on the community center rehab. The splash pad, Josh and Nick just got back from Minnesota.
Minneapolis.
Okay. Looking at some different designs of things. Oh, you're fine? For the splash pad. I don't know what the outcome of that is just yet. Do you want to give a?
Do you want to talk about that? First design, first off, it was like, it really was an amazing experience, way more than I thought it was going to be. Minnesota hadn't gotten any snow, or Minneapolis hadn't got any snow this year on the way up there. Apparently dumped like 12 to 14 inches. We got laid over a couple of times. Did a Microsoft team meeting from the hotel the first night, which I was like, I could do this in Heber Springs. They cleared all the streets. The next day, we went to the factory and just actually meeting the people who build this and everything. Actually went a long way with me and Nick. And they had splash pads that they've done. There was one, if y'all want to take the time to look at it, oh my gosh, it's a bear branch in the woodlands in Houston. If y'all would like to take a look at that, that's kind of like what we're looking at. Their wet areas, what they call it, it's only about 2,500 square feet. We actually going to have around 7,500 square feet. So we're going to spread that out a little bit, but it's going to have that real natural look. I think we're going to be in the court, we're going to be able to incorporate some things from like the Little Red to even sandy beach in our splash pad design, which is kind of just like a unique little thing with natural features, natural colors. So I think it's pretty cool. I think a lot of people will be happy. So first design should be done Friday, tomorrow, and then hopefully be done pretty quickly, and we can move forward with that.
Thank you.
Pretty awesome experience, though.
Thank you for taking that truck.
Thank you. And it was paid for, by the way. They paid for us to go up there. Nothing out of the city's blocking on that.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Huntington Place is complete. Waiting for the sidewalks. We've got bids on those. We are waiting on the letter to, I guess, from RDOT to go ahead and proceed with that. Downtown beautification is still, still got some things to iron out there. Looking at some sidewalk and lining improvements. We're going to have another meeting with RDOT to talk about if the city can take over Main Street and what that will look like if we took it, if we did take it down to two lanes and, you know, how that will operate.
Have you gotten any updates about the trail?
The trail? I messaged Clint today, and I haven't heard anything back. I'm trying to get a number to what it would take to finish paving all of the trails.
That's what I was alluding to, basically.
Yeah, they had said before it was going to be around 200,000, so I'm hoping it's still around that much. I might have to reach out to Bobby Kennedy to get a final number.
So are they done paving the part that they were going to pave?
I don't think they've paved it yet. The part they're going to pave is on the core property.
So that's my question, is wasn't C W B supposed to oversee that?
Yeah, he still is.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Okay. Because our last update, because when I was putting the updates on the website, is that November?
November. I was looking back through today.
That all the paving was going to be done by November? And so, and they haven't even started on it?
Well, phase one is complete.
It said phase two is.
Yeah, we don't, the bid came in, came in way higher to pave all of it, so we had to take some of that out for phase two.
I know, I thought we knew that, though. I thought we, we didn't even.
We did know that, and we talked about going, being able to complete that. But I wanted a final number before you guys said, yes, let's do this. I mean, I think that that's our plan, is to pave it, but we still, it still has to pass you guys.
Well, no, no, no. I thought they were supposed to start it on phase two already.
They have started on phase two, but they can only pave a little bit. We don't have.
Yeah, phase two, I think, is the one around by the hospital.
Yes, and the core property.
Yeah, so it's been.
So they have not started on it.
Yeah.
On the trail, yes, not the paving.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought we already voted on it.
We did, but not to complete the portion that was not paid for.
I thought our vote was to exhaust the funds, and then that we knew that it wasn't going to get there.
We knew that.
Which we done.
We knew it wasn't going to be paved.
Yes. But in order to finish paving it, it's going to be another like 200,000.
Yeah.
We're going to have a number to bring to you guys, so you can say, yeah, you're nay. But I feel like we do want to finish it.
Yeah, but I just thought they were already supposed to be done, even with phase two.
No.
They were supposed to do as much as they could with the money that was.
And I think they're still working on it.
They have, they have. That's what I'm saying, though. They were already supposed to be doing that. It says phase two is going to be done in November. That was the last thing that we got from Clint.
Okay, well, it's not done yet.
They haven't even started on it.
They've started on it. They haven't started on paving it.
They haven't started paving it.
Right.
So it's not done.
No, it's not done, but it started.
They were going to pave, they were going to pave phase two.
Not the one?
I know, but what we already said to do, we already told them to start.
The portion of phase two.
We have already said, take this money and go pave it.
Question is, is the money gone? We have zero paving?
We've got this much paving, but we need this much paving.
My, my question is, too, is Clint still overseeing all of this, even though he said he's done?
That trail project is the only one he's overseeing that we have.
And he's still, okay. Okay, because my, when I asked Nick for an update, and then I guess, I thought, I didn't know. Because I was like, okay, well, where's the update on the trail? He's like, I don't do the trail. And I'm like, well, who, who's doing the trail?
Yeah.
Like, is nobody overseeing the trail? Okay.
Yes.
So even though he's technically shut down.
He said he would finish that project.
Okay. All right.
But are we paving it? I'm just kidding. Let's move on. Let's just move on.
We've already said to pave.
We don't know yet. That's going to get on the agenda when I get a number.
It's fine.
No, we've already said to pave what they can.
And they are.
It's a word.
We're talking about the extra funds, the extra funds that they need. Okay, now all kinds of loss. Third street, we're moving on to the trail. Third street drainage is 70% complete. The fire base are 40% complete. Anyway, I did 70%.
You didn't mention that we're going to get more impact downtown. I mean, we know because of the records, you know, on the sidewalks.
On the beautification, the RDOT grant, the U N S H A grant? Yeah, thus, our sidewalk dollars are going to go a whole lot farther, so we can get a lot more paved.
Thank you.
The next sidewalk I'd like to do, and I don't know if it's possible, is up, up Front Street, where that hill is. I've seen so many kids try to like, or do something right there. I've seen so many kids try to cross that hill right there and walk up to Casey's, that, like, one was real close to getting ran over. This was just like a couple months ago. So, I mean, it's, yeah. Because those cars come over that, and kids are always trying to cross right there, and kids are going up to the gas station.
Well, we'll put her on the list. Okay, our sanitation ordinance, we have it table until second quarter, so I'm going to put it on the agenda for next month. But do you guys want to discuss it at all tonight, or do you want to wait?
Well, I think we need to look at the, what the tonnage is going up to in compared to what we've been paying.
Yeah.
Didn't that, the contract in here says, what, $88 a ton? Is that correct?
I think 85. We worked in the past, we paid 75. They got the scale, they went up, 85.
88.
88.
It was 88?
88, it was in the story. And then I brought this to that old ordinance.
Okay. That's the new contract.
This is the other one.
I don't remember.
Wasn't it like in the 70s somewhere?
I think it was 75 before. It may have been less before that.
I don't have that.
I had to go back here again. I had to go back and look at receipts.
Well, what I'd like to do is get with Scott and do an analysis on the new $88 a ton rate, plus the fact that now that we're disposing of wet cardboard versus just dropping it off. Before we do any rate discussions on it, we want to make sure that we're capturing all of the cost.
Okay.
If that's possible.
Okay. Do you want to, before this meeting's over, do you want to set up a workshop?
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah. I think we should have enough data now. I mean, we, we've been not recycling for about a year now, so we should have tonnage data. And now, if we know what the new rate's going to be, 88, we should be able to back into a rate. And we also probably need to discuss a new leafback, since we're back in the leaf and limb business. Didn't you mention that?
Yeah, ours is, kind of has ups and downs, but.
So all of that will understandably figure into the sanitation rate going forward, so.
I think you need to compliment Steve Scott.
You're getting compliments on, on your service.
Oh, I got you.
Something I want to mention.
Don't hear every option. How's Joe? How's Joe doing?
Uh, he's doing better. He's still rough. Won't be back to work for a while.
Okay.
I want to mention something. What I've been doing is if I got a fairly large box, I cut the other boxes up and stick them in there. It's not going to change the weight, but it will change the load.
Yeah, make it easier.
Yeah, well. I don't, I look out there, and cardboard boxes are stuck out. They, they just ignore them. And so did, so anyway, we cut them up, and they're gone. And they trimmed the, trimmed the trees up in my shop building, and they didn't clean their mess up. They left a big mess on City's property. My wife has called them, and you don't get my wife aggravated about something, because she'd drive you nuts. And I think that guy right now from the electric company is just about nuts.
They're recording us.
Anybody knows her knows I'm not lying.
We don't want to make your neighbors mad either.
Thank you, Jim.
Like all the fiber stuff, I have got some complaints about that.
The fiber company?
Like how much longer.
City property, but I mow it.
They've got three crews coming through.
Okay.
I don't know which crew is doing what, but they're going to be back to back.
Okay.
If anybody has complaints about they've run it up their yard, or done a donut in their yard, they need to contact First Electric, and they will take care of it with the people that they have contracted with.
Okay.
That they can place, just to call the office.
Yeah, there are limbs, oddly, in odd places that they've left already to go like around by, going towards Eden, just past San Diego.
Is that First Electric or Entergy?
With the Xylem Company?
That would be different.
That's their contract company?
I don't know. Since we got both electric companies, which one's out that way?
But they're only using one for one company, aren't they? I think they're all using that one company. I've only seen one truck.
Well, if they've taken limbs down.
Or one name.
And they haven't picked them up, they need to contact whoever their electric company is.
Yeah, because I don't want the guys.
Well, I had one complaint, but it was from Entergy.
There are some piles that would be confusing, and the guys might try to pick them up, and they're cut.
And the contractor would be totally responsible.
Yeah, and I don't want that to be kind of a crossover and put an issue on us.
Right.
So there are several piles like that, that look like, like a pile of crepe myrtles, that have been shredded or whatever. They do a chipper, I mean.
Yeah, we cut my crepe myrtles off, and they're full flowers this year and all that.
No business. We've got the water department audit. We just need to approve it. Paul's here, if you have any questions. We know he loves to talk.
Make the motion, please.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki, when you're ready.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, our CDs are up for renewal. Carrie, can you remind me which ones?
Um, these are Eagle Bank.
Thanks, Paul. You guys want to roll those over for another three?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion, maybe. Roll the CDs over for another three months.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a doing business with Big John. We missed this at the beginning of the year. Public Works Department needs something made. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it's like, oh.
I just want to make sure, I mean, we don't mind building a memorial. Like, I think it was Tony's dad that, like, designed it or whatever. But, I mean, y'all do it, what, every couple of years?
It all depends. Sometimes we go through more, but we did order two sets this time, so.
Is there some more evidence for you to have newer equipment?
No, I mean, it's actually not the original fan for the unit. He actually redesigned a better one for it. So, and you guys just cut them out for us, and he puts them together. But we definitely appreciate that.
Uh, would somebody mind reading this ordinance?
I'll take care of it.
Thanks, sir.
On it. What ordinance number?
It will be 2024-10.
2024-10. An ordinance authorizes the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Big John Manufacturing Corporation, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Big John Manufacturing Corp. is a business in which council member Melissa Cho and her husband Stephen Cho holds an executive or managerial office and ownership interest. Section 2, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated, section 14-42, 107B1, the city council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with Big John Manufacturing Corp. despite any direct or indirect benefit. Council member Melissa Cho and/or her husband Stephen Cho may derive from said business. Section 3, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Big John Manufacturing Corp. shall be limited in scope, time, and cost of the purchase of goods or services benefiting the city of Heber Springs not to exceed $1,000.
Thank you.
Can we read the other one title only, or no?
You can, yeah. You need to.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance 2024-10 by title only.
Ms. Vicki?
Melissa Choate? Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ordinance 2024-10. An ordinance authorizes the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Big John Manufacturing Corp., prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Make a motion to suspend the, wait, suspend the rules and read it by title only.
Second.
Louis always handles this.
He's really good at that.
Yeah, he is. He's really good at that.
Vicki?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choate? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I need a motion to approve the ordinance. Oh, yeah, read the title real quick, would you?
Ordinance 2024-10. An ordinance authorizes the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with the Big John Manufacturing Corp., prescribing the extent of said authority for other purposes. A motion, you'd make it.
Oh, make a motion to the [inaudible].
I'll second it. Jim Adams.
Thank you.
You're up.
Vicki?
All right, Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Oh, wait, no, we're still on our.
Yeah, yeah, you need to.
I'm staying. All right.
Motion carried.
Ordinance, ordinance 2024-11? Shall someone else read this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's for me, though. All right. I can still read it?
Yes.
All right. You ready?
Wait, I have the one with salt next.
Yeah, we have salt.
That's not the correct order. I am. But I don't have the salt one in front of me, so.
Don't?
No, I do. I do, I do. In order to authorize the City of Hoover Springs to conduct business with Salt Engineers and Plating Incorporated, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes, being ordained by the City Council of Hoover Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Salt Engineers and Plating Incorporated is a business in which Councilmember Andy Eklund and/or his wife, Sarah Lynn Eklund, may derive from said business. Section 3, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Salt Engineers and Plating Incorporated shall be limited in scope, time, and cost of the purchase of goods and services good in the City of Hoover Springs.
I move the second reading be, uh, done by title only.
Second.
I move the second reading be done by title only.
Second.
Vicki?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Staying.
Motion carried.
Second reading, ordinance 2024-11. An ordinance authorizes the City of Hoover Springs to conduct business with Salt Engineers and Plating Incorporated, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion. We suspend the rules and place it on third reading by title only.
Second.
Vicki?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
No.
I could both...
He's not voting on the ordinance.
Right.
I'm not voting for the ordinance.
Jim Lay?
Yeah.
Ally Sugg?
You're up, Ally.
Ally Sugg. Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Third reading, ordinance 2024-11. An ordinance authorizes the City of Hoover Springs to conduct business with Salt Engineers and Plating Incorporated, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion to accept the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Staying.
Motion carried. Next, we've got, uh, ordinance with Garberow.
Want me to read that one? 2024-12?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Hoover Springs to conduct business with Garberow Manufacturing Company, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes, be it ordained by the City Council of Hoover Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Garberow Manufacturing Company is a business in which Councilmember Jim Adams holds an executive or managerial office and ownership interest. Section 2, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated, section 14-42, 107B1, the City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with Garberow Manufacturing, despite any indirect benefit, Councilmember Jim Adams may derive from said business. Section 3, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Garberow Manufacturing Company shall be limited in scope, time, and cost of the purchase of ladder platform for use at the municipal airport not to exceed the cost of $5,500.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Vicki?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Upstaying. That's how you do it. Want me to read it by title? Well, make a motion. Did we already do that? All right. Ordinance 2024-12. An ordinance authorizes the City of Hoover Springs to conduct business with Garberow Manufacturing Company, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion. We suspend the rules and place it on third reading by title only.
Second.
We didn't vote on that one, did we?
Wait, Vicki?
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Staying.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Read it on number 3.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-12. An ordinance authorizes the City of Hoover Springs to conduct business with Garberow Manufacturing Company, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion to adopt the rules.
Second.
Vicki?
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Upstaying.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next I have an invoice.
We don't need to... I'll invoice it after. That was just a quotation proposal for Charlie to see.
Okay.
So, I'll invoice it once we build it.
Okay. Okay, next we have invoice for Superior Signs. For a sign here at the community center for $19,684. We do?
Did we get a couple quotes?
It's our logo and it just... Is it Parks and Rec at the bottom?
It's, yes. So, it's Hoover Springs. It says, "Community Center" underneath it. I went and looked at it to check prices. I should've just printed it off. The five by 10 was a $16,000 quote. The six by 12 is $20,000. But it's just the Hoover Springs logo and instead of saying... Was it saying underneath it right now? Whatever it says underneath.
Go make a splash.
It says, still says, "Go make a splash," but underneath it says, "Community Center." And it's going to be put on the, uh...
Thank you, sir, to me.
Is it 25B? Right there. It's going to be up against the fence sign. Did these are mine last week? Last week? Yep.
So, you said the... So, the quote I have here is the six by 12. It needs... You're saying it needs to be the bigger one?
The big... The bigger one is the one that we were going to go with.
Oh, so you're not wanting both of these signs? You just want one of these signs?
Yeah, just one. Yeah, he just gave us two quotes.
Oh, okay. That's... Okay. So, what's the total price for what we're wanting?
What was it? $19,800 and something like that?
$19,684.
There you go. $684. There you go.
That's what we have.
So, is the power that's down there, we're going to be able to use?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we're going to be able to run it. It's actually going to fit on the opposite side of the road next to the fence. I'm not sure what dealership this is right in front of us, what that is, but...
By the fence?
Yeah, by the fence. So, in between the fence, we're going to be able to run off that pole, go underneath the fence, and power it that way. So, it'll be a lit-up sign that says, you know, at night, you'll be able to see this.
So, my only question is, is like, I don't want to get to like the splash pad and we're going to be like, oh, we need $50,000 in like chairs and everything else. Like, are all those costs already built in, the splash pad and everything else we need?
No, no. So, like, well, I mean, that's part of this whole process, especially spending the last 48 hours with Nick, is just trying to finalize what kind of money we have. You know, and that's kind of what we talked about earlier with trails. That kind of stuff all affects that money as well. Uh, so we're looking at like that 800 to, uh, 800,000 to $1 million splash pad. They'll vary that. They're trying to fit us in on that lower end, hopefully. We'll see. Uh, and then go from there to be able to purchase shade structure, whether it be picnic benches, whatever we're going to put underneath those, chairs, stuff like that, around the splash pad. But this is just something that we just, you know, we... It's on our list, you know, the big list that we have. It's just on there also.
Yeah.
But there is room on the whole cover. I should put three foot wide, ten foot tall, so... So, it's going to be ten foot there. There is places down that three foot section they can put more stuff, listing like splash pads.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying.
We'll spend more money in the future.
I don't want to spend $20,000 on a sign when we might need $20,000 to buy chairs to put next to the splash pad. You know, that's what I'm saying. It's like, do we want to put?
You've got to have a sign so people know where to come to put splash pad.
It's been here for 15 years, I think. We can wait a year. I'm just saying, I want to make sure that we got enough money to do. I... That was my only thing is...
Well, and Nick was... Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, Nick's actual kind of price range that we discussed was like, we have about 1.2. So, let's just go ahead and say we have about 800 to 1 million for that. So, that's still leaving that 200,000. I said, we're going to back... We're going to try to get what we want with splash pad first and then back our way into shade structures, things like that.
But we need... We may need 200 of that for the trails, too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then, that's where that, you know, if we get the $1 million, then there's the 200,000 for the trails, you know.
Should we wait till all those costs come in before... I'm just trying to figure out this stuff, like...
We do need us.
Like, why would we do a sign right now before all that, just?
I do. I mean, just in my opinion, I do think people still struggle with where... I was interviewing people the other day. Somebody couldn't find it. They literally were driving around and they were like, where am I at? Like, I'm on the backside at once and they couldn't find it. And it was, which was kind of comical in that moment, but it was like, they ended up not being able to find it and that was it. So, I mean, there still are people who can't find the facility.
Did we get multiple quotes for this? Because it's like 20 grand.
Uh, the only... This is Superior Signs, is that right? I believe it's Superior Signs. That's the only quote we received.
We don't have to give awful bids unless it's over $35,000.
Yeah, it's $35,000 is the threshold. But he came and did a demo with a five by 10 and a six by 12. And it's... We definitely want to go with the larger one if we can.
Yeah, no, I was just... Because it is 20 grand. It's not insignificant.
It's not cheap.
Yeah, right.
Nothing, nothing.
Six by 12?
That's a lot. I don't... I don't do them.
Put up electricity.
So, for comparison, this is the same company, but I'm just saying, like, the Hoover sign that we put up. That's more... Like, it's really...
It's ten foot near.
Yeah.
With the whole cover.
I'm talking about both the signs put together. I'm talking about the monument sign and the sign that we put up.
What do we budget for?
I can't... I'm trying to hear what she's saying.
You've got a year-old cabinet and something new that would be ten-foot.
Yeah. I mean, well, it wouldn't hurt to get another quote. It'd make me feel a little bit better, just to say.
We can shop around.
I mean...
I mean, it wouldn't bother me to do that. I don't know how many we have of those in this area, you know? Like, if you don't mind afterwards, did you get more than him when you did that with the Ashar?
No, I'm just saying, I don't think it has to... I mean, of course, we want to go local, but...
Yeah.
If somebody's going to drive in from Circe and you can do it for $5,000 less, then...
I agree.
I just...
It won't be $5,000.
No, I know. I'm just saying, then, it doesn't hurt to get more quotes.
What do we have budgeted for improvements for you that are outside of the scope of the bond? Do you remember? So, I was just trying to look at.
Went at close to 700,000, went in the net range that we were... And the total number that we were taking, like, things like the nets.
Because we're doing that.
The nets were things. The sign was on there. The list I have is downstairs. It's in the meeting room downstairs.
Is this coming out of bond money?
No.
No.
No, we just had a large balance.
Yeah, we had that large O and M balance that...
That basically has never been used, which is why we had to issue a bond to fix all this stuff.
And then they messed up our bills when they came and put the nets.
Okay, we'll get some more quotes.
I mean, I do think we should get at least just one more quote, just to see if it's reasonable. If it's reasonable, we go.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Ways and Necks' agreement. You want to table that till we do our workshop?
Yeah, let's set up a workshop for pretty quick and we'll get it done.
I've got metal sign frames stacked up behind my shop building. And they're about four by eight that you can put a sign in. I've got a partner, but I believe I could wind up giving you one if you think you like it. Now, if you want to go check them, you can go over, um, Sunny Meadow, 307. I've got a metal building there. You can go around back and look at them. But you'll have to cut a tree to get one. It's not that big, but it's... But anyway, you can take a look at it and say, I think, I made signs for somebody else with them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Check it out. It'd be a gift from me. So, it could cut your expense. I hope so.
Okay, next I have a letter of recommendation for the bid that was awarded for Weddington sidewalks.
I'm excited if those are...
Yes.
Do we have to do anything with that?
Uh, we just need to approve... Approve to accept the bid from who it is awarded to and the amount.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that document.
It's BMD Builders LLC of BMD. And the project is $252,775.
Then that's from the old?
Yes, our past grant.
From... That one's better.
Um, between this and the TAC grant and the bond money, we are covered on sidewalks.
I approve... Or I move that we approve the bid from BMD Builders for $252,775.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vicki?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Wayne Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have, uh, survival plot ordinance and a new contract agreement.
It says on the advisory committee... What is it? Going to be a couple of people from the forum court, a couple of people from council, or what is it?
So, the county already has an advisory committee, so we thought we would just add to that. And myself, all the other mayors, the surrounding cities that are in this contract, um, the fire chiefs. I would love for a council member or two to be on there. I'll leave that up to you. I would invite anyone to come to that.
Well, that's my question, because I sent Van Buren Counties out to you guys. And what I'd like to see is that that's actually stated in this, who is on the committee. Because in Van Buren Counties, it just... Because if it's not stated in there who's on the committee, I just think that it could be made up of anybody, right? Like, this one just... This one says, "The ambulance oversight board," which I know y'all are calling it a committee. It has two representative representatives from the hospital and one of them is a licensed physician that lives in the county. Um, and it, I mean, it just listed, you know, it says, "The Van Buren County Rescue Squad, Van Buren County Fire Chiefs, Van Buren County Judge, and the mayors," and it lists all the cities. Three, uh, three county justices of peace, two city council members from two of the cities. Uh, from like Clinton and Fairville, I'm guessing because the county's already most populated. Um, and then it just says, then the judge is going to chair the AO... The committee. And when they will meet, the committee will meet no later than six months after the inflammation... Implementation of the contract and that subsequent meetings shall occur annually or just whenever the judge sees that it needs to be met. So, I like that it's laid out, who is actually on the committee in the contract. Because otherwise, it just says there's a committee, but then who's on the committee? Right?
I mean, yeah, but I hate for that to hold us up.
Well, I'd hate for it to be the whole court and nobody on the city representative.
Oh, that won't happen.
But it could, because it's not in the contract.
Do you want me to have to change it?
Rebecca, what do you think? I mean, for a contract, I mean, you think it needs to say who's actually on the committee?
I think you're right, that it could be comprised of whoever doesn't specifically identify.
Yeah. I mean, we're saying that now, yeah. Oh, that's not going to happen, but it could, because it's not actually...
It's intentional, absolutely.
Yeah.
You'd want... We would certainly want a stake at the... Since we are the biggest, if you look at the EMS calls, we are the predominant.
Since the committee decides where the ambulance is placed at, yeah, I think it makes a difference.
Well, no, that's in the contract.
It says, "The committee decides where they're going to be, how... Where they're going to be in the contract."
What we have now is the same... It's the same thing as when you... Well, the telephone company or any other utility. It's a franchise agreement, what we have.
Yeah, but I mean, but it says that we're going to have three in the city. The other two that are currently equipped and...
Well...
What do we care?
Well, I think we want to... Certainly, if there are going to be an advisory committee, it would make sense for the biggest area, in terms of volume of calls, to be in the decision-making advisory committee.
Besides, that's a headquartered here. Their equipment lost theirs because the guy said he wasn't making any money. I hate to go through that again, I can guarantee you.
Shane, do you have that wording in another contract?
So, I believe...
It's right here.
Well, you've been placing names, and I believe the contract...
No, if he already has one that, from a previous contract, that has those names, like, who's on the committee.
So, the...
With the county?
The contract spells out where they are. So, there'll be three in the city, two outside the county. The committee was dealing more with where they're placed outside the city. But to speak to Ally's concern, and I think it's absolutely legitimate concern, because it's not spelled out there, but I'd like to say, the reason it's not spelled out, and the reason we use the word committee, is board has some legal connotations to it. I mean, it has some legal authority by statute in the state of Arkansas. And we didn't feel like, in reference to the contract, that that was our place to be, naming a legal board or naming those people of the board. Uh, Van Buren did do that, but Van Buren has had an actual legal board in place, set in place by the county for probably 10 years now, which was why they already had the names there. Uh, we did choose to use the word committee. Our hope was that, in all honesty, the board, the mayor. I mean, and we wanted to leave that up to the city and the county and the other outlined cities that would be a part of the contract. You guys tell us. I mean, we're going to be there at that committee because we're there to serve you. But if, you know, if it needs to be spelled out, there's, you know, three from the City of Hoover, three from county, or whatever that needs to look at, I'll find it. So, we're not opposed to, to laying that out there, but the reason we did it, because it's, that committee's never been here, or the board has never been here.
That makes sense, but you can add, in, in a committee, it's fluid sometimes as well. I mean, people come and go, and as they, as they're really concerned, but you can still say you can have representation from both the council, the forum court, without even specifically the mayors, you know, the county judge, without specifically identifying.
Well, and even the Van Buren one, I know it says the mayors, et cetera, but their board actually works, where the mayor, board, or appointee is how it works. I mean, so...
And, and I'm...
Are you thinking about type of limitations from each section?
Well, I'm just saying there needs to be equal, equal representation, is what I was just gonna point. Yeah.
There's not a specific...
The Van Buren one, there's a couple of seventeen members.
Uh, but, 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 we've got the mayors...
Oh, well, that's when we, more than that, I would bet. Brent, how often does the EMS committee meet? Every month?
The county one meets every month.
So, there's already an EMS committee?
Yeah, the county already has one.
Because they, they didn't have coverage, remember, they're coordinating all the little...
Yeah, but are y'all talking about using that committee, or is this a new committee?
One of the things they discussed at the last meeting was if with the new committee potentially coming about, was maybe rolling this. The existing members of that were into that.
Well, that's what's not really laid out in this, then. Like, what is that committee, who makes up that committee?
I think that's totally up, up to you guys, and the county, and the other cities. I mean, I, obviously, I would be there.
Probably great, if you'll probably do a great job, it's just more of an emergency, or, you know, for a program down there.
But, is that, but I really, a real thing, with that, Mr. Grant's here, probably, maybe clarify this. The, that would be more of an interlo, the committee would be more of an interlocutative agreement, or would it not?
Well, I'm talking about whoever the EMS, whoever is gonna be over this contract. That's the committee we're talking about right now.
Yes.
I don't care what we want to call it, I mean, obviously, they, they changed it to EMS advisory. I didn't realize they already had that board, and that's who are gonna be over this, but it...
That, that board doesn't handle just anything, though. That, that board handles county fire issues, repeaters.
Well, so that's what I'm wondering, are, are we, so are we creating a new committee?
Yes. Yes, but what you're talking about was those existing members, maybe? Because that's kind of a little bit of their role for the county now, or part of it, maybe those three members from the county being a part of this. That's, what was discussed, Scott?
I have, I have, there, every city in the county plus the county signing the contract. So, that, that was one of the big debates about every, all five cities in the county having skin in the game. So, somebody from every municipality could be, I mean, every mayor be involved, every mayor have city council president. Me personally, I heard, didn't want to get into that debate, you know?
Yeah.
You know, there's seventeen Van Buren counties, at least hoping we could do it with less. There are obviously representation from every city, because every city has to sign the contract. But our, the county ordinance, the way I understand it, is just giving the ju, the judge, you know, the rights to sign it and proceed on into the contract. So, however, the city, but, but, every city's signing.
Is that defined somewhere, what that committee is?
Not the individual.
Yeah, so that, that's what I'm saying, is if we're, if we're saying that this committee is over the, the contract, and is gonna be working with survival flight, and they're, they're gonna be the ones meeting with them, saying, hey, we're upset about this, we're upset with this, that, it's defined who is actually on that committee?
I, I, I can, I'm just speaking for what I've heard, not speaking for the county, but, um, this contract begins Oc, October 1st, 29th, November, what day? November 1st, coming first, I think it start, it begins, uh, November 1st.
Yeah.
So, I've heard conversations that, like, get this, we'll have plenty, have plenty of time to get the actual, if you want a board or a committee, we got, we debated, or the responsibilities of having an official board, didn't know, really needed a board, or needed a committee with representation from every city on it. If you could do that without having a board, it seemed a lot simpler, if everybody could get along. You know, because the board had to be appointed, had different ramifications for having a board. But, don't matter, as long as there's something, and that, that's kind of what I understood the county to, to say, all right, we got, go ahead and go into this. Give survival flight time to do their planning, but before November 1st, all the, you know, everybody's gonna, gonna have a board. As far as emergency services committee, it could phase out, when it started a couple of years ago, it don't have to continue going, but if we need it, add more members to it, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I just think since it is something new, and we haven't had a countywide service, you know, y'all have been doing what y'all need to do for EMS, but now, since it is gonna be more countywide, we need to make sure that that's just defined.
And, and the way the contract's written, it, I mean, every city's signing that, so they're, 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 they're part of it. So, it, it tried not to change anything that was existing within the city, I don't think it did. We wanted to keep that same coverage, that's the intent, is to keep the same coverage, and where the ambulances are, and...
You did actually change it to say that if there was no one ambulance, that would be a huge threat. And it, it just said city.
Did change all five ALS, too, because in the workshop, that got brought in, but...
I don't know if any other council members have used survival flight, but they're getting it on me by my first name. And I'm perfectly happy with how they treat me, and the only thing about it, that ambulance rides like a log truck.
Well, the, the way the contract's written, you can get out of, you can get out of, anybody that's participating in that contract, that's signing with just every mayor.
Yeah, I, I'm good with everything else. The only part, like I said, was looking at Van Buren counties, I just like how they had a section where it said, who is actually on the committee.
And really, I don't know that, my thought, my thoughts on that would be, maybe if you wanna, if you wanna do something like that, that be in your ordinance. You know, the city ordinance.
But that would just be our ordinance, though, and it wouldn't...
I don't know.
Actually, the contract should still be...
Yeah, because the con...
Ms...
The contract is what, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, he was saying, we could just put that in an ordinance and not in the contract, what would that mean?
Well, that, we, we don't have any, uh, there's no, there's no jurisdiction for the council to determine who, who...
Yeah, it would need to be in the contract, probably.
Right, it would need to be in the contract, we, we don't have any authority to say the, um, the forum court's gonna have some, and this city's gonna participate, and this city's gonna participate. And the point is, Ally's concern is legitimate, so that if we, um, and the, the language that, that was used, you know, everybody's got skin in the game, that's an argument that could be used against the city in the future, in the fact that, well, you sign, you know, you sign the agreement, and that's what it said. And so, you know, we've chosen whoever we've chosen to be on this committee, and so, now is the time to, now is the time to, to protect the city's...
We're ninety-nine percent the way there, we've gone through all this, we're, we're there.
That's right, I mean, it's just, when I identify, just a tweak about, everybody, are there any other...
Concerns?
Concerns about the contract?
I have none, other than, I, I like Ally's point of just, let's just define that and move on down the road, and that way it's iron plaid, everybody's happy.
So, we're here, and what we want to see is an agreement between the, the county and the various cities about how many folks from, from each, uh, separate jurisdiction will serve on the committee.
Yeah, that, that's my only...
And Van Buren county has a good guideline, I mean, that's, that's fair, you know, we've got mayors, um...
I don't think we need to define personnel necessarily, right, but we would say mayor and other chosen representatives.
I don't think you want to identify specific, your, your committee needs to be fluid, so that people can come on and off.
I mean, and it, it says, the judge, mayors of the cities, and then it lists the cities, or his slash her designee.
Right.
So, and then, yeah, three justices of the peace, plus two city council members from...
Yeah. I think that's fair.
Okay, so you want to add that to the contract?
That, that's all, I, I would just like to define, since basically the committee is over this, I just think it needs to be defined, who, who is the committee?
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you pass that to me?
You can have that.
You can have it.
And that, that really is the only thing that I think needs to be added, everything else looks good.
Okay, I think we should get this added, and then, I think, we should pass it and then send it to the county.
Yes.
They've made these changes, they've sent it to us, so, and then the balls of our court.
Yeah.
Yeah, we pass it and send it to them.
Yeah, and then was something printed, printed in the paper today that was wrong?
So, I've asked about that, it's just some wording from their own ordinance. And I, I think it looks funny, but I asked about it, so, they're checking on it. It's from the county's ordinance, it's from the ordinance from 21. Yeah, but that's their old verbiage, and then it says that they're...
Did you see that, Shane?
I didn't, but I was there, and, and the ordinance was read.
And then it talks about canceling that contract, that past contract, and then allowing the judge to enter into this new one.
Yeah, I think their ordinance was just trying to give a history of what got them to there.
Yeah, it just, it looks confusing. I didn't feel like there was need for that old verbiage, but, okay, they'll have to pass a new one, anyway. Okay. Twenty twenty-three budget amendment.
So, were we gonna vote on a change to the wording, or?
Well...
Well, we, it needs to be redrafted, just that paragraph, just that.
So, we'll do that, we'll pass it and send it to them, right?
Yeah.
So, you'll have a signed, passed amendment?
And one of the concerns with survival flight was they wanted to get this passed as quickly as possible, because they've got new equipment that they want to purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we can have a quick special meeting.
Yeah.
Why don't we align it with the workshop?
Can we do that, do we have the work? I mean, I think there's some...
You can have a meeting first, and then the workshop.
Okay, do the meeting, and then the workshop.
We know the wording, though, right? Is it just a wording thing, can we not just...
We can't do it tonight.
We can't?
No, we, we need to be careful and right.
I think we just do that. I think, we'll do a quick meeting beforehand, make sure everyone who needs to know, knows, and then we can talk about garbage.
Okay. I'll go ahead and pick a date.
Let's get through everything.
Huh, you want to get through this, the meeting first?
Let's get through it.
Okay. Budget amendment. Who's ready to read a bunch?
I'll do it, fill the paper.
Um, I think we just need to fill it up, so...
I forgot what the amendment to add on.
Do you need me to read?
Yes, please. No, I like this. Old school way.
Did you just read the, the end balance?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have to read the whole shebang, right?
No.
The end balance of each specific department?
End balance, yes.
Correct. All right. Resolution amending municipal budget, resolution twenty twenty-four dash...
Zero four.
Amendment number two. A resolution amending the budget for the city of Eversprings, Arkansas, for the twelve months beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, appropriating money for each item of the expenditure there and provided for in further purposes, whereas the city is determined as necessary to amend the city's budget for twelve months beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. And whereas its finding, and it is the finding that concludes the city council that the attached exhibit A of the proposed amendment appears to be accurate, necessary for budgetary purposes, now therefore be resolved by the city council of Eversprings, Arkansas. Section one, at the body of city, at the budget for the city of Eversprings, Arkansas, for the twelve-month period beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, is hereby amended in part as set out in the attached exhibit A, which exhibit is incorporated herein as if set out word for word and figure for figure. Section two, the respective funds for each item of expenditure proposed in this amendment to the city's budget for 2023 are hereby approved and adopted for the operation of the city of Eversprings, Arkansas, by the city council on this date and constitute an appropriation of funds which are lawfully applicable to the items contained within the amendment. This amendment may be altered or revised by action of, of this governing body, and unpledged funds may be subsequently appropriated in other purpose except as prohibited by law. Section three, the mayor and her duly authorized representative may approve for payout, for payment out of funds appropriate by this amendment, otherwise approved by the city council for these purposes, or may disprove any bill's debts or liabilities asserted as claims against the city, provided, however, that the execution of all contracts, commandments, and lease contracts shall be performed by the mayor and city clerk or recorder, when authorized by a resolution in writing approved by a majority voted by the city council president participating. Section four, if any provision, provision of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstances have invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of the resolution which may, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application. And at this end, and to this end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be severable. General fund, ending balance, three million nine hundred eighty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars. Community center O and M, ending balance, seven hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. Sanitation fund, ending balance, one million seven hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars. Street fund, ending balance, six hundred ten thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars. AMF fund, ending balance, hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars. Airport fund, ending balance, one million, ending balance, one million seven hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred twenty dollars. Administration of Justice fund, ending balance, sixteen dollars. Cemetery fund, ending balance, forty-four dollars one hundred thirty-two cent, forty-four thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. Emergency funds closed, fire equipment fund, two hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. Fire protection fund, ninety-four thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. Municipal court administration, twelve thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars. Police equipment fund, thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars. Reserve fund closed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choate? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Next, I had another quick little add-on, I haven't gotten it, um, for the public safety building. Uh, there's some remodeling things that police and fire department would like to do, and it's gonna be a total of thirty-four thousand two hundred fifteen dollars.
I don't have any problem spending money on redoing the building, obviously, we've, we're already kind of approving before. But before we spend thirty-five thousand dollars, can we see kind of what it's gonna look like? Are there any kind of discussions about how it's gonna be, do, look, function?
Yeah, uh, to Karen?
Yeah, I can come up with that a little bit. So, the bulk of it is, um, kind of rebuilding, what our day orders, the different parts and all that. We'll take the, uh, current council room and turn it into like a...
Can you come a little closer?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't, yeah, there's no mic over there, but it's hard to hear.
And the air is blowing, so... Yes, well, then it gets on the cam, on the video, if you're talking like...
So, um, okay, so the current council room will be turned into like a joint training room, would have, you know, these style tables with some, some nicer chairs, a screen on the wall, a nice podium for instructors to be able to teach classes. And then it would take the room that's, uh, right behind that, it's just kind of a storage room right now, and turn it into, uh, four bedrooms, just four sleeping quarters for all the firefighters to sleep in.
Is that the old chamber of commerce room, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it's between the two.
Between the two, yeah. Yeah, it's where our bathroom stuff is at now.
Okay.
Uh, they would, they would turn those into four individual sleeping bedrooms versus the two they have now that are, that are sharing, pretty much. And then, um, it just kind of moves a few walls around inside and adds a little office in there, which we already have, we just kind of shrink it up a little bit. And then opens up the old chamber of commerce office into a bigger, uh, kitchen, living quarter, like dayroom type, and then a laundry room, whatever. And then, as far as, uh, the rest of the building goes, updating, kind of cleaning up the two bathrooms we have up the hallway, and kind of cleaning some things up. No major, like structural changes and all that kind of stuff, it's just interior work.
Okay, so interior reconfiguring, so that it's actually usable as a police or fire safety?
That gets us set up to go, you know, from here on out, so we don't have anything else.
There's nothing you need?
I think we're gonna put maybe some new carpet and floor in.
Just stuff like that?
Always, and stuff like that, but we're not doing any structural changes.
I just wanted to see what we need to, you know, how we need to do the, the fence work. We need to go up from, from the gas, or...
Same time we're doing the debates.
Well, we were trying to get it done a little ahead of time, and we'll get that part done.
The fire department's doing the work.
Yeah, we're doing all the work, so, mine and Jay's, they see upon it.
Yeah. I just wanted you guys to see, in a, in a big number, that way they can just go ahead and get it done.
Where'd you get your estimates from, just?
That's the stuff I've just gathered through research and everything up. And actually, I talked to the, like, the drywall estimate, I've actually had them come out and look at everything. And then, the HBC guys came out, and the plumbers come out, and it's kind of hitting their, their kind of business, so...
Question about the building proper. Have you had it looked at from a, I know structurally it's fine, it's like a cinder block building, right?
Right.
Roof is in decent shape, okay, and when we move the equipment out, like your trucks and stuff out, that will alleviate any of the exhaust smells and all that other stuff, is that?
They, I think they're gonna use it for storage for their, like, swap vehicles, like that, but there will not be trucks running in and out there every day, and that kind of stuff, it'll just be a facility for them to use at that point.
That, that'll become the police, yes, sorry. And you guys are happy with that plan?
All we want is for the fire department to be happy.
You already got your car for the year, so you're happy, right?
Now, next year, two more cars.
We've kind of moved some stuff around already, just kind of getting everything ready, we're to the point now where we need to actually start.
Can I get an update on the FABT building?
Absolutely, um, we have the flooring laid, except for in the very front, I'm gonna get the toilets put back in, um, I need a couple more days to finish up painting, um...
And are you guys doing that?
I've been doing the painting, um...
Your mayor is painting?
I've been painting.
Okay.
Carrie and Ms. Amy came over one day, and we had a work day, and, uh, Scott came in there, he's been helping us, um...
Team building?
Yes, it was, it was.
Okay.
So, I think two more full days, and I should have it finished painted.
But...
When do you, when, when's your, oh, go ahead now.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, I see sign, like, we're gonna need a sign over there.
Yeah, I have a quote for under five thousand.
Okay, and so, you're thinking like five thousand, you know, like five... Okay, and so, you're thinking like five thousand, you know, like five thousand more dollars and you're done over there, or what do you think?
Uh, we've got to move the phones over, but I don't think that's gonna cost that much, uh, we've talked about doing a security system like what we have at the current building, um, with the key fobs, and a kind of a lockdown situation, um, I've gotten a quote for that, but I haven't picked it apart yet because you put a bunch of things together in it.
So, it's high, is what you're saying?
Um, well, that whole plan that he gave me was like twenty-three thousand, and it, I kind of got sticker shock, but, um, I haven't picked it apart yet, I don't think we need all of those.
There's gonna be some police storage evidence files over there, or no?
We haven't decided yet, right now, we, the only thing that we may do is, uh, make some room, once some of the filing stuff is out, may make some room for the state police in that building as well, they just need a few small office areas, so we may have them come on in.
What would that dictate, if there's files over there, the security level that we, that the new building has to be?
No, our staff will stay in-house, uh, the only thing we could do is use the, the, uh, vault area for some of the long-term storage, but it would be something nobody, you know, have access to, got to figure that out.
So, you said state police in the public safety buil- building?
I'm sorry.
State police in the public safety building or in the F A B T?
In, in the public safety building.
Okay, yeah, 'cause like, what's gonna go...
Right there where you come through, there, there's a kind of an office area that the D T F is in right now, when you come in the back door, uh, that's a lot of the file cabinets that Amy uses, so those will go across the street.
Yeah, well, and then, like, where they're at right now, what will go in there?
Who?
Like, where their offices are at right now?
Uh, CID is kind of what I'm looking at, we're, we're trying to decide, but I, I think CID is gonna go in there.
We have one of them in a closet back there.
I've seen...
Are we gonna do some painting on the outside of the building?
Uh, we're gonna pressure wash it.
Okay, let's see what that gets us.
I did see the bank building, it's been pressure washed, I think.
Yeah, but it needs it again.
I, but it looks a ton better.
Yeah, it does look better. Sign on the public safety building, please.
Yes, well, that's what, it says sign, so that's what...
I haven't got a, we didn't figure on that yet, kind of, maybe possibly replacing that one.
I have, I have already offered the mayor a lot of number, except I didn't, because Scott's department helped us, we're pushing, I think, you know, give it to them.
Yeah, we've signed itself, I'm just talking about, you know, just...
Given the basis. Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that, or are they all small invoices?
This will be all, which one, this one?
Yes.
Well, it's all a bunch of small invoices, I don't know if you want to vote on it as a project? That's only... Yeah.
I think we should just put a thing not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars without further discussion.
Right, well, and I'd also like to request this to come out of general fund, so that Ryan doesn't have to get on his fire safety.
That's probably fair and reasonable. Make a motion to allow expenditures up to thirty-five thousand dollars for improvements of the current municipal building to house public safety from the general fund. And want, do you want to put a date on that, or no? Yeah.
Same.
That's on our, our daily task and call volume, so things...
By Memorial Day weekend.
Party!
Twenty twenty-four, and if not all of the money is, all, all the funds have been exhausted by then, we'll, we'll visit progress on the funds and reallocation of resources.
Right, I like it, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Ms. Vicki? Thank you, Ryan.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, open mic. Announcements, Easter is this weekend, it's holy week, I hope everybody has a great and pleasant weekend. Announcements, all I can say is Eclipse. Lots to do next week, um, there's Easter egg hunting, and, y'all have any announcements?
What do we need for, I don't, but what do we need for timeline for you to redo the, redo this?
Oh, I'll send that to, um, I can send that to Survival Flight, and they can make the change.
Well, we have to tell them what they need.
Yes.
By the end of next week, we can have that.
Okay, so, end of next week, so the week after that is Eclipse week, but, um, do we want to just get together for sanitation or wait till after that? When would, when do you want it, Vai?
Tonight. As far as us making the change, that's not really us, guys, we're, we're, the committee is for you guys to have a say.
We were, I don't think she meant for you all to make them.
No, just the, in the contract, you can send it to me in Word.
Yeah, if you can send the contract to us, we can make the changes.
We'll make the changes.
We can make the changes.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just, again, I'm not so sure that they have an interlopend agreement, I mean, that's, you're developing a, a middle division.
Yeah, well, it'll cover everybody.
We'll make sure it covers city and everybody else who has a stake.
Yeah, uh, I can call Eric and see...
I'm all about the, the...
Right, right, no, I know.
I just didn't know, and I think that's really why I wasn't there.
And it could be everybody that's already on that committee, it just needs to be in writing.
Just say...
That we have a stake in it.
Yeah.
So...
Tonight.
Okay, so if...
We can have it done really quick, so whenever you want to do the sanitation, we can do it all at one time.
Scott, do you have a quote on a back?
I have what?
On a new back?
Uh, it was like one thirty, but I might have a, we've been talking to the owner of Deekmire, which is our back brand, and he said that we could go cut out the middle then and go directly to him, and it'd be prior, a little over a hundred thousand.
Okay, so I need about a week to put together numbers based on financials and all that other stuff, and now that I know that's a hundred grand for that, I know that we're eighty-eight tons, I can go, I can look back and project out, I think. We had been billed at what, seven, about eighty, what do we even bill at the last year? Seventy-five?
Yeah, seventy-five, eighty-five, I don't remember exactly.
I'll assume eighty and go back and figure out how many tons we do per month usually, and go forward with eighty-eight.
Okay.
Did we get our dump truck back yet?
What's that?
Did we get the dump truck back yet?
Yes, sir.
How's it running?
Good, so far. Haven't used it damn much, vanxman down.
Let's do, let's do April, or Wednesday's okay, because of baseball and all that other stuff? No, at church night.